I need to pledge allegiance followed by moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic, for which this stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. All right, the first item of business today is the recognition of Mr. Young and the students for Santa's house. Come on up, gentlemen, ladies, if there is one. All right then. Well, tell us who you are.
Hi, my name is Lane Horn.
Hello, my name is Mathias Field.
My name is Derek Whortley. I'm Mr. Young.
Well, tell us about the project.
Go ahead, boys. Didn't want to build it.
It was fun. I like doing it every day. A lot of, you get to know people better just by like the way they act and how much like their work ethic and everything like that. It's just fun.
How many people on your team?
Eighteen in our class.
Seventeen in class. Wow. I appreciate the work you gentlemen did. It was a concept that happened in a Main Street meeting and Mr. Bernacki's students took on the design and we picked some of the best to take back up to Main Street and then that crew determined which house they wanted built and then we brought it over to the high school. You guys did a phenomenal job in recreating what that student had drawn, so thank you so very much. We would like to honor the students of Mr. Bernacki's class. Did you figure out who it was?
Last minute, we figured it out. Yes, so we got the intel on Friday at 3 o'clock. It is Aries Tuttle, 4th grader. Congratulations, Aries. Thank you for the design. It was awesome.
They wanted to do that, but we didn't have that in on the back of the drawing. Are you in 1st grade right now?
4th grader.
Oh yeah, you're not over there. I'm sorry. So thank you for bringing that to life. It looks, it looks really cute the way it's set up there now, so it just, it looks like something on the storyboard, so. Well done, man.
Thank you.
You're welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting, but if I had the chance to leave now, I probably would. Have good evening. Be fair to you. All righty, moving on. We have the approval of the minutes from November 8th, excuse me, 18th, December 3rd, regular meeting and December 3rd study session. Did everybody get a chance to go through those with the final outcome? Any questions or concerns about any of those minutes? If not, I would accept a motion that we approve them as presented.
So moved.
Thank you, Casey.
Second.
Thank you, Ethan. All right, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries 6 to 0. The next agenda item is, let's see, oh, we get to go right into the financial room. And we have in, do you want to do, Shawna, you want to show off?
I will.
Okay.
Thank you. For our education fund, our receipts for November were $1,068,543.39. Our year-to-date receipts are $11,638,787.51. Our month-to-date expenses were $1,303,057.99. We did not do any transfers. Our appropriation balance was $483,070.71, with the year-to-date expenditures being $12,581,091.29, thus leaving a balance of $92,324.93 in the education fund. And just to clarify, we did have a three-pay month in November, so anytime we have a three-pay month, it takes our cash balance down. Debt service fund is, we took in $7,237.92 from Lit. Our year-to-date receipts are $2,85,962.91. Our appropriations were $1,539,195.25. Year-to-date expenses are $1,702,687.75. That leaves our cash balance at $1,848,373.61, of which we will be dispensing our debt payment this month, all of them doable or payable in January, usually January 1st or the 31st. So those debt payments will be made. They are on Amber's desk, or off of Amber's desk by now.
Is that comparable to the 1.6, almost 1.7 that was disbursed in July at the end of June?
Yes, it should be pretty close to that. And our operations fund, our receipts were $21,997.2. Our year-to-date receipts, $3,440,485.34. Our month-to-date expenses are $369,753.64. Our appropriations were $964,676.37. And our year-to-date expenses were, have been, $4,132,884.63, leaving us a negative cash balance of $658,452.97. And that is, kind of leads me into, we will be receiving our property tax disbursement, should be in the bank tomorrow, so that is our second paycheck for the year for operations. The debt service fund will also receive some revenue from that. Our, kind of all at once. Also, our state basic grant deposit has been made, so that's our $1,028,000 sitting there to be receipted in. And then, we do also have, we received our notice from the state, our curricular materials fund, that will be getting transferred over to education. Has to be done by December 31st, so any balance that we have in our Fund 900, which is our textbook rental fund, will be transferred over to education. They've given us directive on exactly which account numbers and everything we have to use because it has to be, it still has to be maintained for curriculum. It can't be spent on anything else. It cannot be spent on salaries or benefits or anything like that. It still has to be used for curriculum, so they're tracking that. We do have some encumbrances out of that fund, so I will hold that back until those payments are made, just so that we don't end up with a negative balance in that fund. And then, one other big piece of information is, we did receive our 1782 notice from the state, so on our budget, they are, there's a couple of things that they noted on there. One of them is, there is a possibility of a shortfall of about $400,000 into our education fund, and it's gonna, it all is based on the ADM calculations and those things. So they did give us a warning that it's possible that we may be short $400,000. It just depends on the calculations and the upcoming legislative changes that may be coming. So they just gave us a heads up on that. The other thing, somehow, somewhere, and I will own it 100%, I'm not really sure what happened, but when I transferred everything from the Form 1s over to the Form 4s, it didn't transfer the appropriations for operations and education. So it looks like, we still got our tax levy, we still had everything there, but the specific numbers didn't transfer over, so we need to do an additional appropriation to spend money for 2025. So I apologize, I did, it was one of those, I emailed Judy and I said, "What did I do or where did I mess it?" And she's like, "I'm not sure." She said, because all the budget numbers, everything was there. So I don't know if it just, when you say "copy" and I missed it somehow. So I do have everything prepared for the additional appropriation, and it will be hitting the newspaper next week for advertising for the public hearing. I'm not sure, have all of you guys ever gone through an additional appropriation process on budgets? I'm pretty sure Casey, you've gone through it. I know Jan is. Okay. What it is, is we have to, when we do, typically what an additional appropriation is, is if you have, let's say you budget $100,000 and you spend $105,000, you need to do an additional appropriation, which means you need to bring your, you need to add money to your budget that you overspent five. In this case, we just started out with zero, so we need to put our appropriations in there to spend for 2025, is all it is. So it's our four basic major budget classifications, so your personal services, your supplies, our services and charges, and capital outlays. Those are your four categories. And so we just need to lump some, add that to the budget, or into the appropriation balance, and then our system internally will track, will have everything spelled out, itemized for each one of our buildings and each one of our accounts. But this is all the DLGF requires and the state requires is our total numbers in order to spend the money. So that will be, for the education fund, it's the $15,384,850 that we had approved in our conversations with the budget, and our operations fund was the $6,021,150. So the numbers didn't change, they just didn't get translated over for our 1782 notice.
And you need that appropriation done by the end of the year?
No, I scheduled it for, because we didn't have time to do it, so I set it for our finance date for July, or July, for January 6th. So that'll be our public hearing, we'll be that night for it, and then we'll have the resolution prepared for it as well.
Do you have to do an encumbrance then, from this year, because you're going to be appropriating?
We wouldn't do an encumbrance from it, because we don't have, we don't have enough to encumber. So it'll just be addition, it'll just start '25 with our fresh budget. So I do apologize for that. That was not a, that was one of those, I got that, and I even said, "What a rookie mistake and..." We've all been fine. You know, and that's why I said, it's, it'll be fine. That's what Denise says.
Thank you.
I do have a question. The 1.28 million state grant receipt, can you put that in English?
1 point, what do you mean?
You said that there was...
Oh, $1,028,000.
I get the numbers. I mean, the grant receipts, like, what are the grant receipts for? Was that for all of our grants for the year? They're reimbursing us? You said that was going to be...
Oh, 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 oh. On the monthly, no, no, that's just our ADM. That's our, our basic grant, ADM from the state.
That's ADM?
Yes. I'm sorry. Yeah, they interchange those terminologies. They call it a basic grant, but we refer to it as ADM.
Okay.
Sorry.
No, that's fine.
But actually, you ask a good question, so I will answer that question in a different form. We have all of our grants, everything is filed and current with all of our title grants. I just received our final disbursement on our COPS grant, so that one will be finaled out. I just got notice on our first quarterly for our security grant, our SSSG grant. So Jason and I chatted today. I started to fill out our report and realized I probably can't do both the program and the fiscal reports, and so Jason's handling half of it for me. But all of the rest of the grants have been filed, and we should be starting to receive all of that, hopefully before the end of the year, and we will have all of our grant accounts at zero, is the...
Great. Awesome. Good work.
Thank you.
And then when you said the 1782 notice from the state, the shortfall was the 400K, you mean?
That's what they're...
Possibly?
Possible.
What is the possibly? Like, is that...
They said, let me tell you exactly how they worded it. Current estimates shows the current 2024 certified budget is not funded by approximately $401,000. It'll need to be monitored closely so that the expenditures do not exceed the cash balance.
So it's pretty much a, you're not going to get the 400K. It's not, this might happen or might not.
Exactly, yeah. It's more, they're just putting us on notice to keep an eye on it and make sure that everything is okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any questions about the funds report? If not, I would accept a motion to approve the funds reports as shared.
Second.
All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries 6 to 0. Moving on, we have payrolls for, for the November 29th, 2024 payroll of $54, 550, or excuse me, I gotta get bigger glasses. $548,115.38. And for the December 13th payroll, which is $590,110.82. I suppose people already got paid, so we auto-approved them, or you think?
I don't know if you have the claims with the payroll, too.
We can do the claims, too. We have claims totaling $918,815.56, shared with all of us. Any questions about claims or payroll? If not, I'll accept a motion that we approve those as presented.
Seven.
Second.
Thank you, Ethan. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries 6 to 0. Next, we have the approval of the school attorney contract renewal for 2025. That made for some interesting reading. Okay. Anyway, we appreciate the job you've done here, Juan, and you've spelled it out very nicely for us, and we appreciate all the little things you do on top of being here at every meeting and the times that most people don't even know that you're on the horn with your train of thought. Hey, what do we do? So, and that's, I'm not the only one called, so just so... Okay. Anybody have any questions or concerns about renewing our attorney's contract? If not...
No, I think it's great.
Thank you, Stephen, for popping right up there. I would accept a motion that we approve this as read.
So moved.
Thank you, Stephen, for waking up and coming to the meeting. Okay.
Second.
All righty, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries 6 to 0. Next, we have approval of the resolution to close the 2024 year-end. Who would like, is there more to explain, or just that we have to have it done on the 31st? Is that it?
Yes, this just gives us permission to close out the books, do any of our transfers, and make sure that we have everything ready to end the year.
Yeah, buttoned up, so it's... Okay. Any questions from the board? Any questions from the audience? If not, I'll, I'll accept a motion at this point.
So moved.
Thank you, Casey.
Second.
Thank you, Mark. All those in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries 6 to 0. Moving on, we have the approval of an overnight field trip for the FCC LA Leadership Conference in Muncie. Jenny Snyder presented this and is taking, I think it said 12 or 13 people. And they'll be gone for a couple nights, but this is a really important opportunity for them to present what they've learned and showcase that, and then get some honest feedback about, about how they did. So I think it's just a good plan for our kids, and it's nice to see that she's able to do it again this year. Seems like she's got all the finances, et cetera, taken care of, and they'll take care of it. So, any questions about this opportunity? Anyone want to make a motion that we approve this?
Sure, I'll make a motion.
Thanks, Ethan. All right. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Casey. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries 6 to 0. Next, we have the approval of the administrative and classified contracts for 2025. Janet presented us with a nice ribbon of paper whereby we could look at all the details and see what's going on. I think those were all fair and reasonable, you know, changes. And I don't have a problem with it. Any board member have any comments about it? Anybody else? All right. I'd like a motion that we approve these contracts as presented.
So moved.
Thank you, Mark.
Second.
Casey. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries 6 to 0. Then we have the approval of the 24-25 possible classified increases proposed. That...
So per the study session, we were asked to run different differentials in regards to the difference between a 20 cent raise and a 25 cent raise. So with Kathy's help and Shawna's help, we ran those differentials. With the overall impact for IAs, nurses, and secretaries, if we increase it to a 25 cent increase, the differential between the 20 cent and the 25 cent raise would be $6,829.72. If you take the differential with the education fund and the administrative contracts, the overall total within the education fund would be a $33,356.95 increase, and that's all administrators, some of our directors, IAs, nurses, secretaries, that would be the impact to the education fund. Operations, the differential between the 25 cent raise and the 20 cent raise was $3,337. The impact to operation would be $9,270.30 for a 25 cent per hour raise. Food service, the overall impact to food service account with a 25 cent raise is $7,266.38 to that fund. So after speaking with Shawna and the budget that she has built, we felt comfortable with those 25 cent increases.
Any questions from the board?
If I may make one comment, the one thing, and I didn't mention this at the study session, but the one thing that I think is important when we look at raises across the board or anything, is the value of our human capital.
Absolutely.
And, you know, sometimes we get lost in the numbers, and I know we've got a lot of impactful needs throughout the district and some expenses that are certainly out of our control. But the ones that are within our control, I think if we continue to manage those and keep those lower, so we can focus on that human capital and make sure that we're putting those dollars where they need to be as well, is certainly important. And so I appreciate the board asking us to visit that at that time.
Any comments from anyone? If not, I would, I would accept a motion.
So moved.
Thank you, Mark.
Second.
And Ethan, all in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries 6 to 0. And then we have... I gotta make sure, because I'm afraid I'll look at the wrong page. This one says, page two, that's not going to help. Okay, let's go back. This is, I believe the next item is approval of salary schedule for 2025?
Correct. So with the 25 cent raise, we have placed that schedule, that pipeline for approval. We would propose that the pipeline starts the last day of December. That helps us with tracking the pay periods, so that we don't have to do part of the pay period on the old pay scale and part on the new. So the last day of December would be the first day. They would see their increases happen on the pay for January 24th would be the first time, because we're two weeks behind in our pays. So all employees with that hourly rate would see the increase reflected on their January 24th pay, and those administrators who would need retro pay based on the contract. So administrators, directors that have contracts, they would see their retro pay on the January 10th pay period. And so we're asking for approval of the pipeline, understanding that that will kick in the last day of December to meet the new pay period.
Okay. Thank you for that. Any questions from the board? Comments?
Are the numbers correct on the schedule?
Yes.
I mean, I'm just, before we approve it, I just want to make sure that whoever's triple-checked.
There, literally, there were three of us that checked it.
That's good.
Okay. If there are no questions, I would accept a motion that we approve the payroll schedule, salary and payroll schedule.
So moved.
Me, Casey, and Ethan.
You mean, man?
All those in favor. Motion carries 6... Yes, Mom?
Well, I was in favor.
You were in favor. Appreciate it. All righty. Moving on, the next item, number seven, is the approval of the appointment for Kiwanah Library per Indiana Code. I'm not going to read it to you, but it's there. Anyway, they have kind of vetted this person. He's, he lives in the Kiwanah area, which is a requisite, and the Kiwanah Library Board has, is recommending that we also approve him as they have, but because it's a thing, we gotta do it together, so.
Was it my understanding, I kind of went back and forth, so is it one board seat that has to be approved by both?
Corporations.
Both corporations have to approve the one seat, or we each have a seat?
No. We both have to approve the one seat.
We have one seat here that just Rochester Schools...
I mean, not now, but I can see that someday being an issue.
Well, it's just that, I'm sorry, go ahead, Buck, Kyle. Well, when they, when, when they, I don't know what they did, but it was people in that Kiwanah area, they have the choice of attending Rochester Schools, Caston Schools, or Wematt. And, yeah, so, I've lost children on buses because of, never mind, I won't say that out loud. We eventually found them all within the next hour, so it was all good. All right.
I think it's amazing that they found a candidate that was so excited to be on the board.
Yeah, you see, very...
That's rare.
Okay. Any questions about that? His name is, what, did I mention his name? Joshua Martindale? I don't know him, but I'm sure some of you have known him.
No. But nice to meet him. Would have been nice to meet him before we approved him.
You go to the Kiwanah Library Board meeting.
I have enough Board meetings.
Just a thought. Yeah, I'd accept a motion that we approve Mr. Martindale as presented.
So moved.
Thank you, Casey.
Second.
Thank you, Mark. All those in favor, motion carries 6 to 0. We have a nice collection of policies. The first one is the approval of the third and final reading of Policy 6013. And I hope by this time, we've all had an opportunity to read through that. That was, Dr. Snotty highly recommends that we adopt this, and we must. And that is, we were trying to come up with a cash reserve for our district so that we can have, you know, when things get rough, we've got something to fall back on. And we have not been, we haven't focused on that. So now we're putting a little... So now we're putting a little bit of pressure on ourselves to make sure that we're a little bit more resilient in terms of how we spend our money, and if there is an emergency or something, we've got money to fall back on. So, anyway, any questions or comments from the board? Questions or comments from the community? If not, I will, I will accept a motion. Stephen?
Second.
And Ethan. The dynamic door, back in action. All right. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries six to zero. Next, we have information only, the second reading of this nice little list of policies. And if any of you would like to read them, they're all available on the school's website. And you can even look on the agenda for tonight's meeting. And we, again, we go over these things with Dr. Snotty, and he directs us very well, lets us make our own decisions, but most of them were technical corrections, or we have to do this, and here are your two choices. Do you wanna say must or may? That kind of thing. And then we make a decision and move on. So, most of these are in that purview. But we don't have to vote on that till next month. And then we move on to student and stakeholder focus, and that would be the donations report. As always, we are, I'm overwhelmed by the kindness of our community in terms of what they, what they donate to our schools on a regular basis. Columbia Elementary had an unknown individual donate a slide for the daycare. Oh, I'm sorry, a slide of an unknown amount, excuse me, donated for the daycare from Mill Creek Church. Columbia Elementary had $1,000 donated for the purchase of coats for students in need, and that was from Wayne and Joanna, Jana. Columbia Elementary had $500 donated for 2024 Care for Kids from the Builders Association of North Central Indiana. Columbia Elementary also had $100 for the purpose of the Columbia Lunch Fund for anonymous Columbia Elementary had $200 from Walmart gift card for family in need from the American Legion in Rochester. We had an unknown amount for school glue for Mrs. Bel Petio's classroom. And I think that's just for the overflow, isn't it? So people can get what they need. Yeah, that's wonderful. And that was from Burton Ridge Land Center Church. Also unknown, we had coats for students, an unknown amount, coats for students from Kim Burton. Columbia Elementary also had a $500 donation for any item to benefit students, and that was from Skyline Builders Incorporated. You mopped up this month at Columbia, you got one of those donations. RHS received $200, what'd you say? Okay. RHS received $200 for the Backpack Program from St. Joseph's Church, and the corporation received $875 for student lunch debt, and that's from Joe's Hope Foundation. So, very grateful for all of those.
And then if I may, late this afternoon, Mr. Johnson from the Community Foundation contacted me, and we had an anonymous donor who was donating $10,000 to our backpack lunch program for all of the students in Rochester Schools who are in need, working with Mr. Holcomb and Mr. Shane Halls. In the past year, our numbers have more than doubled. We're sending out about 97 to 99 backpacks each week, and that donation, all of these donations are life-changing for students and families within our community, so thank you.
That's awesome. Thank you. I didn't miss that.
No, it came in late, but in order for us to go ahead and make that deposit and to begin ordering food and to keep up with our vendors, if we could approve that donation as well this afternoon or this evening, we would appreciate that so that we can move forward with the ordering of food for next semester.
With that new donation, tonight's donation's total 10,000, or, excuse me, $13,375. So that's just outstanding, and again, we're very grateful.
It's life-changing for our families.
Yes, it is.
That food gets dispersed on Fridays, correct? For the kids to have food.
Correct.
This week, we're in due, just because we're going fourteen weeks out, and things can be very tight. We're gonna deliver it tomorrow and Friday.
Very nice.
And all joking aside, on the Columbia piece, you know, there's the coat thing being up there. That's a big deal for the little kids. I mean, it's a big deal for any kid. But we spent a lot of that money already providing coats for our kids. We do coats and we do shoes, and if you're in our building, you'll see the need, and it means a lot to those kids and those families, so we appreciate it very much.
All righty then. I would accept a motion that we approve the donations as read.
And so.
What'd you say? And so, yeah, we'll take that too. Okay, thank you. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries six to zero. All right. And then we have faculty and staff, and the, we have the personnel report. So, beginning with Columbia Elementary, we have Deanna Glatteiri, temporary elementary music teacher through the end of the year with a daily rate of $140. For Rochester High School, for winter intercession, Ken Hughes, teacher for math, hourly rate $53.12. Bryn Wilson, teacher for ELA, hourly rate $34.05. Deb Wolford, teacher of math and special services, hourly rate $53.12. RMS Athletic Recommendations, Emily Casper, sixth grade volunteer coach for basketball. I assume that's girls' basketball? Okay. Yes, girls' basketball, and that is a volunteer. Dave McBeck, RMS Football Head Coach for 25-26, stipend of $2,640. Josh Overmeyer, RMS Football Assistant Coach for 25-26, stipend of $2,100. Justin Miller, RMS Football Assistant Coach for 25-26, stipend $2,100. Jacob Good, RMS Football Assistant Coach for 25-26, that's gonna take a lot while to get used to, and for a stipend of $2,100. Jason Kaiser, RMS Football Volunteer Coach. Next, we have RHS Athletics, Troy Pryor, RHS Varsity Cross Country Coach, stipend of $2,850. Jared Tyler, volunteer, RHS Varsity Swim Coach, RHS Football for Fall of 2025. Ron Schaefer, head coach, stipend $7,860. Ken Hughes, assistant coach, stipend $3,900. Derek Beck, assistant coach, stipend $3,900. Bryce Roberts, assistant coach, stipend $3,900. Isaac Schaefer, assistant coach, stipend of $3,900. Kayden Zek, volunteer coach. Joe Schaefer, volunteer coach. Then we have the Maintenance Department, new hire of Zane Ruff as the RMS Building Technician. His hourly rate is $14 per hour. Any questions about the personnel report? If not, I will accept a motion.
So.
Thank you, Stephen.
Second.
Thank you, Ethan. All those in favor? Motion carries six to zero. And we have the superintendents report.
Begin with directors and principals reports. Mr. Snyder, if you'd like to begin, please.
Okay. Well, we went through a lot of stuff that we had going on last month, some of the big things that we just kinda hit on here recently. The Holiday Kindergarten Concert was a very good concert, and the kids did a great job. And that was Mrs. Weaver's last concert for Columbia, so it was a real good concert, like she always does, but we're definitely gonna miss her in that role. Our pre-K went to the Elmo Art Studio, and that was really great for those pre-K kids. They got an opportunity to do some painting and make some ornaments and things, so we'll be picking those up this week, and they really enjoyed that, and it was a good experience for them. And in our P class, we've been doing roller skating. I don't know, I know you guys probably remember several years ago, we bought our own roller skates for Rochester. We continue to use those at Columbia. Real good experience for the kids. The kids really enjoy that, and it's almost like, by, after a week or two of them doing it, it's, we basically have our own roller skating rink. We've got music playing. I get out there with them, and it's a lot of fun. And we just appreciate that support from years ago to buy that instead of having to rent it every year. Real good experience for those kids. I think it's great when they get an opportunity to do that when you don't see roller skates a lot anymore, except for the little wheelie things that kids roll around on. But upcoming stuff, obviously, we've got break getting ready to come up, so this week, we're finishing off some of our end of the, or middle of the year assessments and things like that. We've also got Digitarium coming, which used to be called what we call Planetariums type things. We've got one of those coming. It's a blow-up dome that we get through the service center up north. Myself and another teacher got trained in it, and if we get trained in it, then we can get it for free, and we don't have to pay for it. We paid for it one year because we didn't have the training, so we went through the training over the summer and got that done, so now we can use it for free. So, we've got two days of that going on at Columbia for our first grade. It's tied in with their standards and their astronomy unit that they're doing, and it's gonna be really cool. So, we'll get plenty of pictures of that, and the kids really enjoy that. We've also got our final zebra zone of the year, and this one is a special one. It's a Grinch Christmas zebra zone event, so it'll be a lot of fun. We've got some extra things planned for that day, and the kids will really enjoy it. We've got a good show coming up, and I like this show because all of the teachers do their own skits, too. Like, each grade level kinda makes their own skits and does, has a part in the show, and the kids really enjoy seeing their staff up there. So, that's what we've got going on.
We had our fourth grade concert last Thursday, Mrs. Weaver's last official concert with us. It was phenomenal. She did a great job. Fourth grade students did awesome, had some really amazing solos, so if you get a chance to check that out, please do. As with everybody else, doing our end of semester testing, so students have been working on eye-ready, fourth grade, I-Learn checkpoints, and our progress monitoring. Kids are doing really well, seeing a lot of stripe cards come through as far as growing on eye-ready in their math and reading, so that's great to see. We were fortunate to have Bright Star Theater slash Duke. Duke Energy will send Bright Star Theater to you for free to do a presentation on energy conservation. Really cool, it was a Wizard of Oz kinda skit, and the kids loved it. It was great. So right now, we're in our last week, and we're holding on tight. We've got our dress-up days, fingers crossed for some outside recess, okay? And teachers are doing their best, and they're doing pretty good, keeping them learning here. And then on January 13th is, a week from the Monday we get back, is our One School, One Book kickoff. That'll either, probably be 8:30 or 9 o'clock, so just a heads up on that. There, that's what's going on at Riddle.
This is working.
Teachers, our fifth grade is starting checkpoint two for the pilot for I-Learn, so they are maybe five kids away from that. So far, those results are better than the first checkpoint, so super proud of them for doing an amazing job with the kids, and the kids doing their best. Sixth and seventh grade are gonna take their second checkpoint after the break, so, very briefly, the state has broken down what is on each checkpoint for each grade, and sixth and seventh grade have a little bit more standards in checkpoint two, so they wanted to wait a little bit longer. So they give us a large window where we can take those tests. So, fifth grade went ahead and is taking it now, but sixth and seventh will have to be able to report on that shortly after break. But they're all doing fantastic, and I am very grateful for the students and the staff doing their best. We did take Student Council shopping for Miracle Tree. It was always one of my favorite days. They always do a great job planning and really making meaningful purchases. We did three families of four children each, so 12 children got to benefit from that, and they did an amazing job. I wanna thank Mikey's for hosting us for lunch. They did an amazing job, and it was very good. I loved their breadsticks. And also Walmart, they were very helpful. We ended up having a very long line at the end, and they were very helpful and got extra people to help make that go quicker. We did have a choir concert last Thursday. They did a good job. They did a special rendition of 12 Days of Christmas where it was my principal gave to me, so that was fun to listen to. Upcoming, we have a band concert this Thursday. Our staff lunch is gonna be Wednesday, so if you're around, come on over and eat, and we will feed you. Our etiquette dinner, I know we're gonna see a few of you on Thursday. And then our PBIS day for Friday, taking everybody to the Times Theater, and then we'll have our Minute to Win at Games and Victory Drive, so we'll finish the semester with bang. Any questions?
Mr. Hoss?
You ready, Kissler? Get your water so I can get a drink halfway through. The kids finished the Santa House. Thanks for recognizing them. I know they put in a lot of hard work. It's great to collaborate with the community. We had the Alice at Wonderland performance, which was tremendous. We have the Taste of Temptation going on at the high school. Terrible time if you're trying to start a diet because it's phenomenal what the teachers bring in. We're in the middle of a holiday door dancing contest. United Way Silent Auction is in the library right now, led by our students who are the reps for the United Way. That's kind of a neat collaboration as well. We had four of our juniors named to the Rising Stars of Indiana, Lincoln Holder, Olivia Bailey, Allison Callaway, and Carlos Placencia. Congratulations to them. Daniel Yocum participated in the IBA All District Honor Band. That's also a pretty big deal for Daniel. If you see Daniel at a basketball games at the top with the guitar, he looks pretty good doing that. Sophie McCall earned the Fulton County Distinguished Young Woman Scholarship in recognition. I know that's a pretty big competition for our young ladies. Our early childhood pathway, Mrs. Snyder's kids collaborated with star card winners at Mr. Snyder's Building, and they got together and had a good time decorating ornaments. Several groups did Miracle Tree shopping for our families here in town. More work in the sandbox for heavy equipment class. We actually had two bulldozers out there this time around. That was kinda interesting to see. Congratulations to Mr. Young. We kept everybody safe. Key Club has completed another blood drive. The NICF came in. It is scholarship season for our seniors, so parents, if you're watching this, you don't know it, you need to get your scholarships started to get filled out. Our eighth graders have started I-Learn checkpoints. Our math kids have completed. Language arts starts here shortly. We also were blessed, we had a film crew come in last Monday, spent all day with them. We were downtown with the Santa House. We were out at the sandbox with a drone. That is a collaboration of, I think it's 15 to 20 schools for a pretty big grant, and they want to use Rochester Community Schools as their example. They're actually coming back Wednesday for their big meeting in this room, where our culinary kids are catering that. And then, if you know what B-roll is, I did not, it took me a minute to figure that out. They're gonna do some B-roll filming, do some more interviews of students and adults around the district, so we appreciate that coverage. The winter sports are rolling. Tristan Miller is one of our seniors. He went down and competed at the Special Olympics in bowling and got sixth, so congratulations to Tristan. If you were at the game Friday night, I wanna give Ms. Bendez a lot of credit. The band was rocky, and I talked about it in my weekly video. They sounded phenomenal during timeouts and at different times, so if you're not a big basketball fan, but you like, enjoy the band, you should come to a Friday, Saturday night basketball game. We also celebrated Josh Van Meter, because he went down for the adult version of Special Olympics and got third. We recognized him at the end of the first quarter of the varsity game. That was a pretty big deal, getting him a standing ovation, which was pretty neat. I know Mr. Young stuck around, I appreciate that. When we had that film crew here, they spent a lot of time with Mr. Young at the Santa House, at the sandbox.
All day long.
He was my free entertainment to get breaks, to go help Lori with things, so I appreciate what he's got going on and all the opportunities he's offering to our kids. Speaking of that, I-Learn math data, the first time we took it, our average as a building was 20% worse than the state average. At this second checkpoint, we are 4% above the state average. That kudos. I wanna give kudos to Meg McLaughlin. She's been in the classroom, working one-on-one with my eighth grade math teacher and my eighth grade language arts teacher, providing strategies, working through some of those testing skills and some of that presentation material. That is a group effort. I cannot take credit for that. That is Mr. That is a group effort, I cannot take credit for that, that is Mr. Schaefer. Like I said, Mrs. Wilson's getting ready to get rid of, give hers, so we're excited to see that growth too, but that's a big deal for us in the math area, making that big jump on that checkpoint, so we're pretty proud of that. The DOE has released the new diploma standards, so I hope to get a little bit of time at your next study session to talk about that and the fancy SEALs and the SEAL pluses that we get to offer. I could start talking about it, but we'd be here for about another 20 minutes probably. And the eighth grade, I want to thank Transportation, somehow they're going to get all 128 graders to Indy, watch a play, and back in time to get all of our kids home. So that department, I truly appreciate still providing those opportunities with some of their shortages they have. We have a jazz band concert going on right now, it's a shame we're missing. We have a choir concert on Tuesday, the band concert that Mrs. Murphy's going to be the admin in charge at is on Thursday. Good work. We start final exams Wednesday, we give two on Wednesday, three on Thursday, and two on Friday, and then we are headed off to break, and Guidance Department's working real hard on a new master schedule that I hope to get to talk to you about in the near future. My, Kessler, you all right?
You did well.
Thank you for your support as we continue to move forward.
Oh, Special Ed, we are about done training for PSYOP. PSYOP is how do you teach kiddos that are in EL or English Language Learners in the classroom, and it benefits also our kids that are in Special Ed or maybe have five or four, so we'll be done in January with that. CPI training is wrapped up for the most part, but will continue on for next semester for anyone that did not get trained in the first term. I appreciate the four building principals allowing the Life Skills Class, all of them to come together. They went to the Times Theater a couple weeks ago, and that was kind of nice to see, especially like Mrs. Flynn, she was telling me it was nice to see some kiddo she's had maybe 10 years ago, and how, you know, well they're doing and, you know, acting mature, stuff like that, so that was refreshing for teachers who are in the elementary to see the kiddos that are now in the high school. Over in the alternative school, we're able to send some kids back up the road to the high school, have got what they needed, whether that was behavior checks or getting some credits, so they'll go back up there, and then some kiddos will come down to get some help on some things. When we get back in January, we'll do WITA testing, which encompasses K through 12 kids that are in EL, and that's something that the federal government mandates, so we'll get going on that. And again, for buildings that you're trying to work with, and make sure that we test them and don't interrupt what they're doing in their buildings, so.
Mr. Ryan?
In Transportation, we're staying up close with all the brevity leaves and absences, and I'm in a bus a lot, but that's good, different change pace. But got a big thank you to Pearson, he stepped up, he's covering the route for brevity leave for a week, and Logan, he stepped up on brevity leave afternoon, we combined the route to get kids home, timely manner. But other than that, it's all good. We're open, no S for the year. That's pretty nice.
Thank you. Ashata said it best, the human capital in this district is amazing, and we see just portions of it here during these meetings, so thank you for all that you do, and we have a community that embraces Rochester Community Schools and does so much to support us and to get us involved, and we continue to move forward in those directions, so thank you all, have a great holiday, a well-deserved holiday, and it's odd to say, but we'll see you back in 2025.
And if, and all God's people said, adjourned.